It's 6:04 PM. We're gonna call the Woodbury Select Board meeting to order for Monday, January 23rd. Are there any adjustments to the published Select Board agenda that need to be made at this point?
Well, I think John's gonna talk to us not only about the town meeting committee, but maybe about the town report status too, but that's not a big deal.
John, are you comfortable with that?
Sure.
Without a major change?
I have a copy of the warning.
You what?
It's in the...
No, one for you guys to sign.
Oh.
Well...
I should run down and do that, shouldn't I?
Which warning are we talking about?
The warning that you guys have to sign.
Well, we can...
Can it be done electronically?
We can sign it electronically and we can also, if it's published and available, we could sign it tomorrow.
If it's gonna be...
And that would be okay.
Is it typical?
I think that would be okay.
But the one that's in here...
Is dated the 23rd.
Yeah, right. Yeah, we'll just say that we, I mean, we'll think, say that we did and then we'll do it. So you took out those two things in the warnings.
Yes, yes.
And you put in the people's health and wellness. You took out Sylvia Jackson.
Sylvia Jackson.
And...
The library.
No, the Friends of...
Right, Friends of WES.
But yes, added the voted and transferable. Those were also removed from the budget because they are on the warning.
On the warning.
We have here the most recent copy of the warning, so I guess we can just...
I think we should be able to move forward.
Yeah.
I think we can move forward. So we have, without other adjustments, we have bills and payroll orders that are in front of us that Diana has...
Those are never one. I remember going through the numbers over and over and I thought one was skipped, but it's not. When you fool around with a warning.
Gotcha.
You have to keep looking on the numbers.
Okay, so we have bills and payroll orders that are in front of us. Ms. Diana's looked through them. I have not, but they will be signed by the, immediately after the meeting, after reviewed. We have the minutes from... We have the minutes from the January 9th meeting, which is supposed to be 2023, not 2022.
Oh, no.
But I have no other issues with the meetings from this. Unless somebody else does.
Well, we're the only ones that have to.
All right, so hearing none. I'm signing my copy. So we have approved the minutes from the January 9, 2023 meeting.
We're in 23 right now.
And we have space for any other public comments. Hearing none. We are going to move to the town clerk's report, please. Mrs. Turkey?
My last two weeks have basically been working on town report. But I did receive a message from Ann Pelts and also Taylor Blaisdeal from OSSU. Do any of you Select Board members have to sign the school budget? It's just the school members that sign it?
No, we don't.
Just making sure.
Yep, thank you.
Yep, and...
There you go.
Hi. I don't think... I don't think I have anything else, because like I said, the last two weeks have basically been the town.
Chris, may I steal that paint paperclip, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Turkey, good?
Good.
All right. We have the town treasurer's report, please, Ms. Brandy.
Yes, over the last two weeks, for income cash receipts, we did 300, sorry, $3,914.20. 3,000 of that was for the conservation grant for Cranberry Meadow. Direct deposits from the state, $18,512.62 for Class 2 and 3 roads. Also, another direct deposit from the state was $173 of traffic fines. Payroll over the last two weeks, $9,131.17. Accounts payable, $22,643.65. So reports, you have your balance sheet, you have your financial statement, and you have your due-to-do from. One of the things finalizing to get into the town report was the CPA audit done by Sullivan and Powers. Recommendations they had pointed out that I have currently changed. We went to a cash basis for our accounting system. The second thing, they didn't want Tom Beers, who is my assistant, who does the bank rec, to also be a signer. So I have removed him as a signer. Robin, who's also one of my assistants, is a backup check signer. Other things, they wanted us to create a journal entry binder, separating that from the general ledger. So I created that. The other thing, they had recommended that the office get a cash register and balance that daily versus monthly when I do the deposits. So over a month of collecting town clerk fees, as they're called, dog licenses or zoning permits, the cash register would do a daily intake and I would compare that to the monthly to balance. So that was their recommendation. I briefly looked up cash registers on Amazon, around 300 bucks. So that's something in the future, possibly, that me and the girls decide to get for the town office. I wanna say how awesome John Reed has been for the town report and making this all come together smoothly-ish. He does it, yeah. I wish there was a way to pay him back for all the stress we pile on him over the last month. Questions for me?
Ms. Diana?
No, I just wanna say thank you for responding to my questions that I had on the budget.
I'm all set. I appreciate all the work. Thank you. Mr. Larry, can we do the town clerk commissioner's report?
Sure. Had a lot of weather, as we all know. So we've been putting in some hours and using some sand, some equipment. Everything's holding up. We've had a few minor breakdowns, but nothing we couldn't fix that day or the next. I understand there are some complaints around town and I suppose we're gonna talk about that a little bit tonight.
I don't feel like we need to unless we...
Well, yeah, we do. Yeah, we do. I just got a couple of things in clear that we talked about.
Are we good on sand right now?
Yes.
And we're good on salt right now?
Yep.
And as far as equipment goes, other than the long-term repairs?
Yeah, no, everything's...
Things are working?
Running, yeah.
Great.
Like I said, we've had a couple of small breakdowns, but we were able to fix them within the same day or the next.
Great, okay.
So we had a couple, I had a couple of angry men come to my house and they were upset that the town, that the bus couldn't get up East Hill Road and... Anyways, it was a slippery day. What day was that?
Friday.
Friday. So I called Alfie. First I called Greg because I didn't have Alfie's phone number, but now I do. Because I do remember you saying that if people have complaints, I should give them your number.
Absolutely.
So anyways, he explained that in his previous job, they were always after him to, you know, to minimize expenses. And I don't think we've ever had that problem here. I've never, people don't complain about the cost of the roads. They just complain about when they can't make it home. We have a bigger sand pile than we've ever had, from what I understand. And we have three full-time drivers, which we haven't had ever before. And so we're not skimping on overtime and we don't have to skimp on sand or time or anything. Get it done. So it's been, I mean, I understand, you know, they do the sand and half an hour later, when it's snowing, you can't see it, but it's still there.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's what's, that's what's part of what's frustrating is because you go out and it takes you three hours to sand the roads and then in 15 minutes, it's all covered up. All your work is disappeared.
So are your routes basically three hours each?
Roughly, yes, yeah, yeah.
So who has what route?
Well, I'm going to West Woodbury.
Yeah.
So that takes me two hours to go up there and then I got the small routes around, around the village. Greg goes County Road, Valley Lake Road, Buck Lake. And he is up around, he's Foster Hill. And Timmy is East Hill. Cabot Road. That whole area.
So he's got some good hills to deal with.
Oh, yeah, they're all, they're all hills.
Yeah, but I mean, Cabot Road and East Hill Road are the ones that...
Right, well, Cabot Road is a bit of a challenge. One, because of the granite trucks. And two, there's a lot of traffic on it. So there is, there is that. I mean, it's, I think it's, it comes to timing, you know what I mean? It's, that Friday, we had plowed and sanded everything and we were done by, we're about ready to go home at 10:30 and it was, they were still calling for snow throughout the day. So we decided, okay, well, we'll let it finish its job, finish it snowing and then we would come out, do it, take care of it in the morning. That was our plan. If I had my time back, I would have come back in in the afternoon and say, at least sanded, because it was slippery, it was warm. You know, it's, the weather has changed. The weather has dramatically changed. Now we're getting...
Wet, heavy snow.
We're getting snow at 29 degrees. That was unheard of five years ago. It just didn't happen, you know? So now we're getting that, so when it's warm like that, it's very slippery. So like I said, if I had my time back, that Friday afternoon, we would have gone home, took a break and then come back in.
If you had your what, your time back?
My time back, if I could, if I could re...
Oh, you could do it over, okay.
If I could have my time back to do, to make a different decision. But again, I was thinking about the sand. We go out and sand, we spend that three hours and then it's still snowing. It snowed until seven o'clock that night. It would have, it would have benefited a few people right after we sanded.
But not for long.
But not for long. So I'm trying to, have been trying to kind of plan my routes and my timing to be the most feasible and economic.
And fit the most people.
Right.
Yeah. We get it.
So I'm not su, I know, I know the person that was complaining and I want to have a conversation with him. He left a very nasty message.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they said they left a...
On my answering machine. And so I'm just letting myself depress from that because he's wrong. I don't care what his issue is. He's wrong for talking to me that way and I wanna settle that with him. It's okay to have a problem with roads, but I don't need to, I don't need that.
Yeah, it was kind of threatening.
I'm not expected to talk to people that way. I deserve better. So I'm gonna have, you know, I'm gonna try to hash that out with him on a personal level. And if he comes tonight, I'll do it here, it's fine. I mean, either way, for me, but I'm okay with taking criticism. I've taken a lot of it. But, you know...
For something you did for no reason.
Right, right. And I also wanna encourage people to call me, call the town garage. My cell phone's out, everything, my numbers are all out. People can call me, take some of the weight off of Robin. If it has to do with the roads, it's me. So I would love to have those people call me instead of bother Robin and then I can get the, you know, I can get the...
Or me.
The exact...
Or me.
Situation, you know? Robin does a great job. She gives me the correct information and I try to deal with it. But if it's something like that, I can deal with it maybe faster rather than going through all the channels. So I'm gonna encourage and I would ask you guys to encourage people also to call me. That's the only way I can fix it, if I know it's broken.
Reasonable.
I have another question. What do you do with somebody who calls on Saturday night and they say that it sounded like there are cars all over the road, but there probably weren't? I did give her your number because, did you get that call?
I did. It was, it was seven o'clock at night when I got it.
Yeah.
Most of the time when you go out on something like that, they're already, they've already solved their problem and now I've wasted all that time trying to go.
Yeah.
So I didn't respond to that with a truck.
Okay, so I didn't know whether it was appropriate for me to give out your number in a case like that.
Absolutely, yes. And I'll, I'll make the decision. I generally will call people back and just say, you know, it's too late, we're gonna get...
It made it sound like there were cars all over the road, but what I heard the next day, it wasn't so bad.
Yeah, well, that's Greg's route and I asked Greg about that and he said he didn't see any, any cars there. That was the following morning. So they must have, like I said, they solved their own issue.
Your job is not to pull people off the road.
That's right, I agree. I mean, we do it, we do it, we did it in Callasum on occasion.
And that's fun.
As a courtesy.
It's fun.
But I would also explain to them that it's at your own risk. We can't, the town can't take responsibility for damages of us pulling it out.
Right, that's a liability issue.
So in fact, I had a form, in Callas, I had a form that I would have them sign, just releasing the town's liability. Yes, I can pull you out, but you have to sign this form saying that I'm not responsible for further damages. And it worked, it worked.
I know, there was a kid stop on my house today and he had gone off the road up at the corner a little bit and he didn't know what to do and he didn't know who to call. And I couldn't think of anybody to call. I couldn't, I mean, there's no records or...
Not anymore, we used to.
Right.
It's been part of it.
Anyways, hopefully he got out eventually, but...
Was that on the corner of Wheeler and, yeah, yeah, they got out. Yeah, I came, I got word of that, so I went and sanded around it. But there was nobody around.
Oh.
I mean, I'm not gonna hop onto a rig with nobody there. So they must have gone walking for help or something.
Well, that's one thing you can use, so that's helpful.
Yeah.
If you go and sand around it.
So give them your cell phone number, not your home number?
Either.
Either one, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, you have a home number too?
I do have a home phone, yeah.
But you always...
I'm not always there, though.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So that's why, that's why the phone, the cell phone is...
You have cell phone service at your house?
I do.
Oh, good.
You do Wi-Fi.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, this is a challenging time, it really is. It's...
We're in a very interesting transition with the way that our weather is working, especially with the season.
I mean, I remember one time when Gary, Gary Yun was driving and somebody called in the middle of the night and they were stuck, there was so much snow, it was like 12 inches of snow and they were stuck on County Road. And somebody could die in a situation like that, you know? If they get stuck in the middle of the road and can't see who's coming and it's nighttime and... I remember he went out and dealt with it, but he wasn't happy. I think he quit right after.
It wasn't quite the situation here, though.
No, oh, good, no, no. This was, no, this was just screaming.
This is a little bit different. This is just, you'll be a man.
Yeah. So that's when you have to make that choice.
Yeah, yeah, and by talking to the person, I can get, you know, I know the questions to ask and then I can evaluate the importance of it. So when they call me, I can kinda make that call then.
That's reasonable. All right, so Ms. Diana asked her questions. Any other things that you want to ask of us at this point?
No, I don't think so. I know there's a, there's a grant coming up that we need to...
Yeah, Michael and I have talked about it briefly, but I think Michael and you and I might wanna get in...
Get together, yeah.
And figure that out.
Okay.
Is that fair enough?
Oh, yeah, for sure. Yeah, I just wanna make sure that's...
Yeah, I don't wanna keep that out of the cycle.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's just a Better Roads thing and that helps us.
Right, right, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
Yes.
We appreciate it.
Is there anything else for me or any...
Unless anybody else has a...
Do you have to get up early? Do you get up?
I'm up at 3 every morning, yeah. Don't always stay up. I do get up. I do get up and look out the window. Because, and that's the other thing, the forecasts, the weather forecasts are terrible.
They've been awful.
Well, it's not, I mean, at the bottom of the hill, it could be not snowing. But you jump off to my neck of the woods and we've got three inches already. So it all depends on where you are.
Yeah, I've gotten calls from West Woodbury. You know, there's nothing here.
Yeah.
And they're saying, oh, the roads are terrible. It's like, it's just, you know, that 15-minute drive, it's so different, yeah. So there, that's, that's a whole nother challenge.
So, yeah, just a little off the subject, but West Woodbury. If there'd been a time when you could like fill up the truck, drive up there, do your thing, come back and fill up again to show exactly how many gallons you're using to go up there every time?
Yep.
That might be good to put together when we're deciding to negotiate what to do next year. Find out how much it's, I mean, you know how many hours it takes.
Correct.
So we just don't know how much fuel and...
Yeah, it'd be hard to split that up because the, you know, there's a fair amount of roads that I do here in the village.
Okay.
But on that note, there is negotiating underway.
Oh, great.
Already. We are very close to an agreement. In fact, they are willing to, possibly willing to take over immediately. I've gotta call them, I gotta talk some more with OP, but we're not quite there yet.
So there's not, you're not negotiating trading time or equipment like you used to?
No, there'll be no more trading. They're not interested in trading.
So it'll just be a cash thing?
Yeah, yeah, but I, I, I think we'll be happy when we come to an agreement. And I'll give you all that when the time comes, but it's not here yet.
No, that's great, no, that's good. Actually, the trading time thing was always problematic because it was always just sort of a handshake agreement.
Yeah, but it worked for many years.
Well, it doesn't even necessarily...
Before audits, outside audits, it'll be very clear of...
It's nice to have something that is...
Solid.
Solid.
Yeah, we need that.
As far as contracts.
Contracts are...
Where they start complaining.
Well, thank you for taking that on.
Financial statement for you, I printed out.
Okay.
Yeah, that way, kinda up to speed, so you know.
I can watch the...
And that's just of the highway.
Okay, great. Yep. Okay.
Further questions? Okay. Thank you.
Very good.
Appreciate it.
Have a good night.
You as well.
Aye, thank you.
You bet.
Mr. Reed, would you be willing to talk about town meeting committee?
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
Couple things. One is, it's nice that Stevens here, the library has been enthusiastic, going, enthusiastically going after some of this and, you know, teeing up activities to have before town meeting and so it's really terrific. Just great to see kind of the all-hands effort on this. My point or purpose in coming tonight was just a tech, kind of a technicality and that is just to get the name of the committee updated since we're done the studying part. It was designated the town meeting study committee. And I talked to most of the, I've talked to all, but most people on the committee are willing to continue implementing recommendations. So I'd just like to get the name of the committee changed to take the study out of it. And, you know, I think it's important that it be a Select Board, blessed committee so that we do it, everything transparently, that we, you know, publicly warn meetings, all of that. So that's, that's the main thing that I was hoping to get done tonight.
And you have a suggestion?
Sounds, as you can be.
Makes sense to me, but you might have something more. Oh, Jesus. Will the Woodbury Town Meeting Study Committee, having completed its studying, we are updating its name to Woodbury Town Meeting Committee as it works to carry out its recommendations to improve town meeting participation?
All those in favor of changing the name of the town meeting study committee to the town meeting committee? Say aye.
Aye. Should've asked, should've asked Robin because she's really the one in charge of the town meeting, but...
Oh, I apologize.
Has to comply with me.
Well, it makes him happy, makes me happy.
Okay, so it will be known from here to forward as the Woodbury Town Meeting Committee. Woodbury Town Meeting Committee, not Woodbury Town Meeting Study.
The next thing we'll work on is getting the user guide put together. I've already started on that.
Oh, wow, thank you.
And perhaps have at least a draft version of it in time for some of the library activities and the board.
After that meeting the other night, I decided to go home and start making my own list of how wonderful it is to be on the solid board. It might have been a little sarcastic, so far it's pretty long. People keep asking what's involved in being a town Select Board, so...
It's definitely a pain.
VLCT has a beautiful guide for every position that is in the town, so they...
I know, I told them that the town Select Word Book is like an inch thick and they sell it now, so I never got one. Ooh, there you go. Nobody got one.
I have the handbook.
Wow, see that?
They probably don't emphasize as much as complaints in there as realistically happens.
It's useful for some things.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a...
For some things...
There's one like that for the clerk, there's one like that for the auditors, there's one like that for the treasurer.
Giving up that stuff for the auditors, I mean, it's like that thick. There's a lot of contradictory and conflicting information that comes from the same organization, both Secretary of State and the legal assistant. Both Secretary of State and the league of citizens. So, and, and there are at least 200 towns, Middlesex, and that's what, that we've worked at their user guides. A lot of it is just making it simple and, um, you know, overused term, but accessible, you know, for people who want in 30 seconds to have a snapshot. Yeah, and, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a catch 22, because you gotta make these positions accessible.
Accessible.
If you're gonna have, if we want to actually fill all the positions.
But they're not simple.
But the initial guidance can be simple.
Yeah, but that's kind of foolish, because they're not, fool people into taking the jobs and then.
That's what you did to me.
There is. That's true. Fooling, he'd be a very important person.
Thank you.
Thank you, John, we do appreciate all the work.
So you wanna tell us about the town report?
Anything you want to mention about the town report, other than your wonderful job compiling it and how much we love you?
Looking ahead to next year, but there are some things that we can do that make it easier, but. It's done, it's down on time.
Can, can, can you make some of those comments now for looking forward towards next year, how?
But, you know, a lot of it is just starting it sooner, and a lot of it was just health issues and, you know, the town office was pretty thinly stabbed, so, um, so not, it's, you know, nothing that is done and, and, uh, and I appreciate all the proofreading and copy editing.
I was waiting all weekend, you know, and didn't get it till Monday morning.
I got a note from Diana at about 11 last night, saying, you know, is the report done, so I could read it. And I sent it to her as soon as it was at quarter to five this morning.
I noticed that was very early. So, but there was also an idea of whether or not you wanted to include the whole audit in the report.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a.
It's very long and it's very, I can't even read it myself.
Is there part of the summary that we could put in there, or you don't?
It's not.
It's totally up to you.
I worked through it and really what we pulled out in the auditor's report, that one paragraph, is about the only, I was a little surprised they didn't do an executive summary. And so the only thing that they did, um, it's truncated.
There's a difference.
This is the town report. This is the town report with it in there, this is the town report with just his paragraph in there.
Okay, so it's gonna cost a lot of money, I mean, a lot more for printing and posting. Plus, nobody's gonna read it.
No one's gonna read it.
I mean, it's gonna be in the town office anyway, so if somebody.
Available.
We'll have hard copies, um.
And if we can make that clear, that it's available.
Yeah.
And we could have copies at town meeting if somebody wanted to.
Yeah.
I, yeah, I think that five or six copies of those sound a lot better than sending copies around to everybody in town, but.
Yeah, sometimes if you put something out on the table at town meeting, people just take things, but. Then they take, take a quick look and they'll put it back.
This is for looking, this is for taking.
We can put a sign on it.
We can make a sign.
Keep your paws off, and then we know for sure they'll take it.
Yeah, Flipside, we spent $20,000 on this. And, um, and, um, you know, it's a, it's a clean bill of health, so. So we want people to know about it.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Maybe we should go back and ask about a summary, the, the only thing that comes out that's short are all the things that, um, they'd like changed.
Changed, right.
So if you print that without the context of the old report, it looks like, oh my god, that's what's going on.
It's all, it's all bad news.
So if, once we get the hard copy of it, is that something we could have a copy of it in the library?
Absolutely, they're making 10 hard copies at the CPA is, and I can disperse it, and we can just put, library stays here.
Maybe a couple copies.
Oh, yeah.
I'll have to put it on the website.
Thank you.
Oh, there you go.
The auditor's report, the town report, says it's on the website or available at the town office.
They wanna call the office, or, or we can upload it onto, onto the website, and people can pull it off that way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can do that?
Yeah, just order it to John or something.
John just said, I can put it on the website. You're not putting it on the website.
Oh, man, I thought.
We know people, we know who our audio guys are.
I have a question, does it, does the audit?
This is Steven, Steven Murphy.
Deliver essentially good news, is there a favorable audit?
Yes, I did know that.
I would say, publish that on Front Porch Forum and Facebook, I, good news, it's nice to get some good news. I think everyone would appreciate that, everyone in town to see that.
For myself, it was, yeah, this is how I can approve, but nothing was wrong, we didn't find any.
Great.
Yay! And that's the part that I wanted reassurance and I wanted to know what I can do better. But, yeah.
Spread, spread the good news, yeah. And if you do a link, if there's a digital version, then put a link in a, in a, in a publication, like in a Front Porch Forum ad. If folks do wanna look at it, they could just easily put it in digital version.
That's a great idea, they, um, um, the final audit was just sent today, so as, as town auditor, I could do a post.
That'd be lovely.
Good work for getting the good audit.
She did a lot of work too, they, they made her, gave her a lot of extra stuff, during the, what was it, last summer?
Their recommendation was to, to change to a cash basis, and we were modified accrual. But it's very, I like it much better, it's very transparent on the balance sheet, it's, it's taking money, the delinquencies of penalty, interest and revenue, we couldn't, it wasn't money we had in the bank, and so, um, that part I like, because it's not the select board looking at it going, oh, we have $200,000 and we don't. It's still a delinquency, so. So, yeah. I am happy to learn the new techniques and, and what an actual CPA is looking for.
And the fact that you've been doing a wonderful job for quite some time, so thank you.
Thank you for still keeping me.
The complexity of bookkeeping in Woodbury versus Burlington.
It's kinda funny, isn't it?
Burlington to work on it.
So Steve, is this what you were here about, or?
No, I, I saw on the agenda, uh, Woodbury, I mean, Town Meeting Committee, I was curious about it, yeah. Yeah, and I have the night free, so. What better way to spend a Monday night?
I have some wood that I still need to have split, so, you know.
You're not stuck on the road out there.
So Alfie is, Alfie is not dragging you out of it, then, so.
So any volunteering for the select board coming up in March? Per position? For you wanting to be on the select board?
No.
I'm just trying.
It's good, this is honest, bud.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like it.
You were going to that town meeting tune-up thing, or did that already happen?
No, it didn't happen, for moderators, it's February 8th, I'll be there in person, yes.
Good.
Yep.
Well, they're doing it in person, that's.
Who's doing that?
It's.
VLCT?
VLCT.
You can go.
I, um, I wonder if Paul Gillies is involved with that.
He always has been in the past, but he's a guy, I haven't seen him in one of those for a long time.
Yeah, huh, cool.
I think you can do it through Zoom too, can't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, let us know if you want to, John.
Prefer to be there in person.
No, I think it's great. I finally get to teach in person again, so my life is easier, teaching remotely. Alright.
The library did have quite an ambitious list of things that they're, that they're meeting last week, I guess it was, this is Monday, so it must be the last week that they're planning to do to try to help people, um, learn more and get involved with town meeting things.
Town meeting and all. Positions in town and.
And it came out, it was well distributed, so it's great.
What was it?
Well, some of it was, alright.
I'm sorry, but I missed it.
I don't know.
Distributed, some of it was already distributed, like, there was a Front Porch Forum.
Oh, yes, yep, minutes from the meeting.
They'll address this, so, yeah, I'm sure there'll be more, that's great.
But I do hope that if you have, if you get Susan Clark to come, that there's some effort to make sure that people come and listen to her.
Yep.
I don't know how to do that, but.
We will, we will publicize it, yeah.
Yeah.
Who is Susan Clark?
Susan Clark, she's the moderator of Middlesex, and she's an author, she's written some books on, co-authored, books on town meeting.
She wrote that little book that John brought around last year.
Oh, yeah?
And she spoke to the, I went over to see her and she came virtually to one of our meetings and did a presentation on town meeting.
Oh.
And, and town governance and participation.
Yeah, engagement.
Engagement in town government, yeah, democracy, yeah.
Quite, quite thoughtful. Okay. Mr. Reed, anything else that you wanna bring up? It's your time, so, okay. So, um, this is our time to approve, uh, the budget for town report. I have reviewed it and do not have issues with our most recently updated budget.
I, I hope that we approve the one that, uh, is in the town report. I think there are a couple last minute changes that maybe aren't on the one that she gave us last week.
Correct.
It's all set now.
But in the town report, if it's similar, if it's quite similar to the one that I just reviewed, I'm sorry, I have not seen this, I spent time on it, but, um, I had, uh, it's second motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we are approving the budget for town report at 6:47?
Oh, I thought you were talking about the number, I thought it was 6:44.
I'm sorry, I'm, I apologize. Not sure how many numbers I'm, I need to report. And we're a little bit ahead of our schedule, but, um, I don't see any reason that we can't move on and approve and sign the warning for town meeting.
We've been over it and over it, and I think it's fine now as far as the number of positions.
We've reviewed it quite a bit.
For, to get that all scotched out and. All of the nonprofits did eventually come in with Robin's prompting, yeah.
Not having looked through this very last draft, my apologies. I've seen a number of drafts before this one, so. I'll make a motion to approve the town meeting warning for the 2022 year.
Um, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So we have approved the town meeting warning, however.
So it'd be 2023, not 2022?
Well, it's for the year of 2022. In, right, so, so the warning of 2023 for the year of 2022, right?
And 2024.
24.
And 24.
It's actually for the fiscal year 24. It's the calendar year, it's the get.
I did it, yeah.
Please check me on this, so I say it correctly.
You're approving the, the warning for the fiscal year 2024?
Approving the warning for town meeting.
Warning for town meeting.
Town meeting, but it's for.
But also, the, the whole report is, we don't have to approve the report.
We, no, we don't.
The budget.
So the fiscal year is 2024.
Yes.
Budget we approved was for 2024.
Four.
Yeah.
Correct.
So.
Oh, gosh. So you can keep hitting the backspace button and maybe stop listening to anything else.
Oh, so before we get, I'm sorry, back to the town meeting, um, subject of childcare, has anybody jumped in to, to, uh, try to make sure that that happens?
I haven't, what, I'm sorry.
Oh, childcare? Or was it supposed to be called daycare instead of?
Oh, right, for during town, during town meeting.
The, um, you know, the, um, friends at the school have expressed interest in doing that. The libraries said it was okay to use space here for that. So, you know, that's kind of percolating along.
Okay.
One of the little reasons for just kind of getting our little committee invigorated again is to just be able to coordinate things like that, but it seems like they're all moving in a good direction.
Good.
Wonderful. That's wonderful. Still enough, anything else you wanna bring up?
Um, not under.
Before we get into other business and updates?
I'll think of something.
I trust you. Okay. So in terms of other business and updates on business, um, West Woodbury Cemetery, probably the best person to talk about this so far, but I know I have a deed in hand.
You do?
I do.
Really?
Didn't take long.
What?
The deed.
The deed for the old one you made, or no?
The old one. I don't have anyone yet, I'm working on it. Cemetery.
Deed for the cemetery, I thought Chris Green is working on that.
No, he sent it to me.
Really? Oh, interesting, okay.
Yeah, Chris Green is working on it too.
I talked to him.
Well, you didn't talk to me, so you just sent me, you just sent me something.
Chris sent you?
No, you sent me.
I sent you.
So I'm glad Chris Green's working on it, that's good.
Well, yeah, 'cause we, I'm not writing a deed, but, uh. Finally, all the parties are in, in agreement with the revised plot plan that allows for 20 full-size lots and 40 half-size crematory lots. So the issue is what, uh, that there will be a closing coming up, hopefully within the next month or so, although there's no rush, as long as it happens before spring. Robin was working, when she was doing the warning, she was working from a, a, one that I sent her from like three years ago before the COVID, and there was still a, an article in there about appointing, or electing a town, uh, person to approve real estate, agent to approve real estate transactions. And I thought I remembered that that was no longer necessary, because we didn't vote on it last year or the year before. So I checked with VLCT and they said, yes, they, they sent me the copy of the, the citation, that this is not an elected position anyways, it's a, someone, it's something that has to be appointed by the select board. So, um, uh, when it, when the time comes, we'll need to, the select board will have to appoint someone to attend the closing, which will probably be in Hardway, probably be in Chris's office, 'cause Bear is in Hardway. So. We can either appoint someone now or later.
I'd rather wait until Michael is back until we do that appointment. Other business or other updates?
Yes.
Please, Mr. Reed.
We have the abatement meeting set up for this Wednesday, January 25th, 6 o'clock here, in the community room.
Have you got any responses, like, do you know who's gonna be here?
So far, the only ones I know that are not gonna be here are Patrick Flood. That's it.
You might wanna check around, because.
Yeah, I think I could send a reminder notice tomorrow.
Okay, but you could ask them to please respond, so we make sure that we have, uh, forum.
Yep.
Otherwise, we'll just have to do it all over again, which is a pain. Did Ron give you a number yet?
No.
Okay, well, he was working on one. Okay, well, he was working on one.
Any other business that is not part of the published agenda? Hearing none, um, I'll make a motion to close the select board meeting for January twenty-third, twenty twenty-three at six fifty-five PM?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all.